For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening. I'm hosting an Alpena City Council Meeting, March 7th, 2016. I'll call the roll, please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Yes.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? See, we all had a chance to review the minutes from regular session February 15th, 2016, and special session of February 25th, 2016. Any issues, changes, modifications? Assistant hearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns, if you understood that. If you do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. On the consent agenda this evening, A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $177,699.04; B is a request from Nature's Kingdom Wildlife Rehab to be recognized as a nonprofit organization in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license; and C is a budget amendment to pay the 2014 DPI tax tribunal $4,455 from the fund balance.
Do we accept the consent agenda as presented?
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nothing, all the way down to the report of officers, council policy statement number 18, policy for purchases and sales.
Sure, sure. I provide a council with a redline copy of our purchasing policy. And I've also supplied you with a two-page summary of all the changes we made. I tried to catch them all. I know it looks like a lot of changes, but as I mentioned in my letter, that it is a lot of just clarifications, grammar, moving things around, put the small quotes ahead of the big ones. That's some of it. And then a few of the bigger changes are removing a specific name for the forms that we were using in the insurance. That was probably 10 years ago when we went out for bids, and they just named that name of the form. We don't need to do that. You know, the insurance companies know which forms to do. So that way, we don't have to keep updating it just for a form change. And then in discussion with our insurance carrier, we revised our requirements for what we require in insurance. If it's not a lot of at-risk or it's a small project, we can lower our liability insurance. And I believe they recommended $1 million and a $1 million umbrella, which is a little cheaper for people that like a contractor. And then we have the right to go up for our liabilities if it's something that's high risk, maybe a lot of chances of somebody getting hurt. So those were the two main ones. Are there any questions?
Karen?
Can you give us kind of an overview on the purchasing, you know, for instance, is there a dollar amount that the department has, can get quotes for and approve? Is there a certain level that, you know, you and Greg have to approve? And then I understand that over $10,000 comes to us.
Right, that's what we've done. Purchase orders where we'd like to go from $1,500 to $3,000, and those don't come through council. And then sealed bids start at $10,000. And then that's when we would come to you to approve those, once we go off the bid.
Okay, so anything between like $3,000 and $10,000, are you and Greg responsible for reviewing every one of those quotes then, or?
Yeah, well, we'll see them all. You know, everything that's done through, like the warrants, we'll see it. We'll see it coming through on a purchase order. But keep in mind that in the charter, the one thing it does say, it doesn't have a lot of dollar amount limits, but anything above $500, you have to get three quotes. So we let them do it in writing, and on a purchase order, you'll see the three quotes. Even if somebody says, "I don't want a quote," we still get three, and we'll write that right on there. So they can have it written, they can call three places if it's under $10,000, so we stay competitive.
You have something?
I just wanted to ask, I guess, and Rich isn't here, but Steve is, with the change in the insurance requirement for some of this, for some of these, how, is there a mechanism to make sure that contractors who haven't bid in the past because the umbrella is so high that they'll know now that they can, or that they might?
I think there's good communication.
Do you?
Communication, and quite frankly, they all think that we're still at the old, so we have to remind them that we're at the new, and now we're back to the old's finding.
Yeah, it was causing, yeah, it's very expensive for people to get a high amount of liability insurance.
Yeah, I wondered if that would be a reason why a lot of, I don't even know if there's a lot of contractors that don't, that don't bid, but...
From time to time, we've had a couple of projects where they'll say that they can't, really can't do that, and usually that needs a call down to Karen and say, "Hey, you know, with this particular project, it's only a, you know, $38,000 project total, you know, do you think that we could do something different?" So see, we've done that in the past.
Oh, okay.
Some others where that may be impacted was when we've done rental rehab, rental development, because those were smaller projects. You know, if it got too high, the contractors, it would be difficult for them, because they always make us additional insured on these projects, since we're the pass-through on the funding. So that was another one where if it was too big, it could keep, the contractors who would normally bid on them away.
Or sometimes they'll put it in their bids, you know, the cost of the insurance would be part of the bill, which is unfortunate, because they may lose the bid because of it.
Any other issues, questions?
We approve that? Council approves that?
Yeah.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Next up, annual monitoring reports for tax-abated properties.
I'm just going to summarize. It's a long report.
Yeah.
We have six tax abatements. The Hards dropped off, but then we had Alpena Lodging come on the abatement, so we're sitting at six right now. As you know, ATI is closed, they are not planning on reopening, and they will fall off the abatement list at the end of this year. Alroll Steel has a 12-year exemption. They exceeded their investment projection by almost $64,000, and they met their employment projections at a total of six. Dean Arbor has a seven-year exemption. They exceeded their investment projection by almost $36,000 and met their employment projection of 23 to 28 employees, and they have about 27 and a half right now. So they're doing very well. Duville Johnson has a nine-year exemption. They have exceeded their investment projections by almost $248,000. They projected 12 and a half jobs, and we're up to 14 in 2014. For 2015, they are down to 11 jobs. And I gave them a call, and they'd said the reduction was due to people just leaving for different jobs, or for them having to dismiss people. They're struggling a little bit to get people that are qualified, but they do hope to get back up to that 14. David Nishaw's property, as you know, has had two Mexican restaurants, and unfortunately, neither one of them lasted. The building is currently vacant, but he is seeking to get a new restaurant in there. He has exceeded his capital projections by $10,000. He had projected $210,000, I mean $200, and he spent $210,000. And then Alpena Lodging has a 10-year exemption, and to date, they've expended about $2.45 million of the $8.25 million they have projected. And obviously, there are no employees until they open. Are there any questions?
Does, like, for example, does Alpena Lodging have the length, the entire length of that to hit their investment, or is there a certain benchmark?
Well, I'm trying to remember the exact wording. It's basically, you know, when the construction's complete, I can't remember if we put a date on there or not, I'd have to go back, but until they really, they're not getting that much of a tax break, the longer it takes them to get it built. Their big tax break is when it's up and it's at maximum value, and then they're getting the grade based on what, how Jeff assesses it. So, you know, they're not taking full advantage. If they, if that takes too long, or it takes a longer period than normal, it's hurting them in terms of the abatements that they get. And they're not up, and obviously, then they're not up and running either. I did hear that Dave Nishaw is, in fact, I think I may have spoken with him, that he was, is working on that and may have another restaurant lined up, but he's hoping that sometime by mid-year, he'll have someone in there again. And as far as ATI goes, their exemption is going to disappear at the end of the year, but Jim has been working very diligently over the last few weeks on trying to get that property, some interested buyers in it, and get it sold, see if he can get it sold. So he's working very hard on that.
Need to read the statute file on that?
Yes, I do.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen. C is the first reading of ordinance number 16434, an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 2, Building Code, Section 14-31.
Want me to read it? It's very short. Are you here?
It doesn't matter. You want to?
Go ahead.
I don't know if Don had anything to add, if...
No.
Okay. He presented a couple of weeks ago, so council's familiar with this. This is an ordinance of the City of Alpena, Michigan, modifying and revising Chapter 14, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 2, Building Code, Section 14-31, agency designating. Being ordained by the Municipal Council, the City of Alpena, State of Michigan, as follows, the new ordinance will read pursuant to Section 8B6 of the Still, De Rosset, Hale Single State Construction Code Act, being Public Act 231 of 1972, Michigan File Law The City of Alpena hereby elects to administer and enforce Public Act 230 of 1972 and the Michigan Plumbing and Mechanical Codes. The City of Alpena shall also administer and enforce the respective provisions of the Michigan Residential, Rehabilitation, and Uniform Energy Codes and all applicable laws and ordinances. A government official registered in accordance with Public Act 54 of 1986 shall be appointed to receive all fees, issue permits, plan reviews, notices, orders, and certificates of use and occupancy. And all personnel performing plan reviews and inspections shall be registered in accordance with Public Act 54 of 1986. And the provisions of this ordinance shall take effect on July 1st, 2016, after being duly adopted by the Municipal Council and duly published.
Very similar ordinance, I believe, is before the Alpena Township Board this evening. As you know, the electrical inspector is shared, works for both jurisdictions, and the intent would be that the mechanical and plumbing inspectors would operate in the same fashion.
March 21st for approval. Next up, bids. Citywide boiler inspections. Steve?
Evening. Report is presented. Just wanted to mention to council that with the warming weather and walking about utilizing our sidewalks, we've already had one citizen notice the public safety building with some of the soffit, that, you know, just some redundant pieces that are hanging there, and just mentioned it to Chief Fordbus, and he kind of replied that contractors on their way. So I just want council to know that probably if you were going to hear some comments on it, the contractors due to start real soon, and we're going to start with the soffit system pulling the rest of it down and repairing those pipes that are up in that soffit, so just be aware of that.
Excellent, thank you.
On February 8th, 2016, the city received an open bid for the citywide boiler inspections. Bids were sent to various firms with two bids received, Lake Shore Plumbing Heating and Cooling and Winkoff Plumbing and Heating Incorporated. The intent of the project is to perform monthly and annual boiler inspections in accordance with the 2009 Michigan Boiler Code Rule 27. Over the past several years, I have been performing the monthly inspections at City Hall and Second Avenue Bridge. Swiss staff has performed the monthly inspections at the water and wastewater treatment plants, and Bob Adrian, City Fire Department, has performed the inspections at Public Safety Facility. This will continue with the exception that I will perform the monthly inspections at City Hall, Second Avenue Bridge, and Public Safety Facility. And no way does this reflect on Mr. Adrian, he's more than qualified, but I'm in the building now as it is, because I also check the elevators, you know, here at City Hall and over at Public Safety. And again, the staff there has threatened to give me a uniform to wear there, so, because I'm there to point off. But it's just a matter, it gets me into the building, gets me into the mechanical room and in tune with what's going on. And again, Mr. Adrian has the same type of controls on the system there as I do, so it's just the fact that I'm in a loop doing them, so I'm just continuing on. The code requires a service technician certified to perform the annual testing to complete all the annual testing required in accordance with the Michigan Boiler Code Rule 27. Winkoff Plumbing and Heating Incorporated holds all required mechanical licenses for the inspections. The City of Alpena shall have the right to extend this contract for one additional three-year period, and both parties can mutually agree upon prices for the additional three-year period, in no case shall the contract be extended beyond December 31st, 2021. It is my recommendation as the Assistant City Building Official that we award the first three-year contract for the annual citywide boiler inspection to Winkoff Plumbing and Heating Incorporated as follows. Alpena City Hall, $65 annually; Alpena Public Safety, $130 annually; Second Avenue Bridge, $65 annually; wastewater treatment plant, mechanical room, $150 annually; water treatment plant, high-service pump area, $150 annually; and wastewater treatment plant, backup boiler, $150 annually. Any questions?
The only question I ask, Greg, was because, because the value is so low to do that work, $710 overall, that, is that, would that be common for you to have that approved by council because it's so low, or is it because it's a three-year contract? I was just kind of curious.
It was a three-year contract primarily, as I understand it, as why we're requesting council to do it.
Okay.
You know, to, that we brought it to council. Again, it would be probably in the same light if council were to change within the three-year period, at least then, you know, we know that it's locked in.
I was just going to say, I wasn't paying enough attention to Mike probably either, when you asked me about it, so, because it is a low down.
I was curious. I was reading the whole thing, I was like, oh, $710.
Mike just wants some camera time.
That's what I thought.
And I need to practice.
Right.
No, no, that's fine. Thank you, Mike, and thanks for the comment on Bob Adrian. That's nice of you to clarify that.
We approve the three-year contract to Winkoff Plumbing and Heating to boiler inspections as yes.
Second.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sorry.
Can I vote?
Sexton?
Yes.
Next up, county ambulance bids.
Good evening. On January 26th, sealed bids were opened for a new county-funded ambulance. As you recall, the county reimburses the city for the purchase of the vehicles, but the city buys them in the first place. This is a budgeted expense. The only difference is that since the last one, the federal KKK 8182F safety specs have changed, increasing the cost of all ambulances by about $24,000 due to the power loading system. The good news is that the power load and power cot are part of the thing, are part of our safety initiative that we're trying to do through the CIP. At this point, half of that will come aboard the ambulance, and the county's paying for that half, so all we need this year is a cot, not a loader. So kind of need in that regard. In any case, we took sealed bids, the lowest bid took total exception to all specs, bid a stock unit, cookie cutter, take it or leave it, and it didn't meet the federal safety requirement, so we rejected that bid, or recommending that we do so. The next lowest bid was Mercy Sales of Saginaw, bidding a marked vehicle for $175,000. The County Ambulance Committee and Board of Commissioners has agreed to increase the allocation from $150 to $175 to meet the new federal safety specs. And so that is just perfect, believe, the amount of money that we have, so that works out very handy. In any case, if we can, can award the bid and get the order in right away, we should have the new unit by June 15th or so, which is a pretty short timeframe, but there's a slot right now to get in on the assembly process. So what we're asking to do tonight is just to accept an award to the lowest responsible bidder of $175,000 for Mercy Sales of Saginaw in 2016 for type three ambulance.
Just one question, fellow teams. The old ambulance that's being retired, I know we're taking some equipment off that, now does that belong to the county to do it as they will, or do we trade that in? Is that part of?
County rigs belong to the county when we get rid of them. Usually, they sell them for scrap, but they've allowed us to pilf parts off of old county rigs to put on newer county rigs. And so we get the full life out of them before we give it back.
Is this gas or diesel?
Gas. With the new emission standards, diesels are just too expensive to have, we've done all gas now.
Excellent.
Ready? Move to accept the bid to the lowest bidder, Mercy Sales, $175,000 for the new ambulance.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi. Thank you, Johnson. Thank you.
Next up, communications and petitions. A is the Thunder Bay Film Society's Summer Movies by the Bay, variants of noise ordinance from 10:00 PM to 12:00 AM on June 3rd, 17th, July 1st, 15th, 29th, August 12th, 26th, and September 9th, and request for alternate days to be reserved.
I just wanted to say one thing on this one. Normally, we don't bring back events that have happened before, but in this case, there's a few different things. The noise variance was the same as last year, but he's also asking for the Fridays in between his reserved ones. And that was something we just wanted you to decide if that's something we should do. We don't normally have a lot of activity on Friday nights, so we could do it, except during the Fourth of July weekend.
That's what, request for alternate dates, days to be reserved.
Yeah, normally, people, yeah, like with the music on Saturday nights, if it rains, they would go to the school. But in this case, he'd like the Fridays, other than the ones he's reserving, in case it rains.
And I suggested that it come to you, because you are now locking in all those, even whether he uses them or not. And if there is somebody who would like to, it won't be available, and then if he doesn't use it, it's still not available, because it's, unless, except maybe at a very short notice or something. And we just wanted to make sure you were comfortable with that.
Greg, we did have an event that was attractive for our community come up on one of those off-reserved dates. Does this prohibit us from?
If we agree to...
You know, if we can use that date?
Well, we could always ask in that, but if, if he doesn't want to take the chance, if he hears that, wow, there's some iffy weather on the one day, he wants to hold off, he would have those reserved. And, you know, he would have first choice on that.
He is in the audience, if you have any questions.
Yeah, if you have any questions.
Because I'm assuming that, let's just say, argument say, in my calendar just disappeared like three seconds ago, that if, you know, if it was raining on June 3rd, then because you have an investment in that film and what you have, then you would like to show it on the 10th. You would show it the following Friday. Now, so I guess, I guess if, if, if the movie went off on Friday the 3rd, any, you would assume that anyone would have, anyone knew that wanted to use it on the 10th would have, would have an opportunity to use it on the 10th, but they just wouldn't know until the 3rd.
The 3rd, yeah.
So, so.
Yeah, it's just cutting that timeframe down.
So they would only have a week to prepare for whatever it is they're doing, I suppose. I mean, if it was...
Or something, you know, if somebody had something that they wanted ahead of time, say a month ahead of time, and they contacted us and said, hey, we're looking to do this event on this date that is one of the alternate days, I would definitely be willing to work with them on that.
And the, and it's not, I mean, band show hasn't really been used on Fridays over the years?
No, the city band's usually on Thursday nights, and then the music is on Saturday nights.
Sundays, too.
Yeah. The one thing was the Art on the Bay and the Brown Trout would be the two that would conflict with Joe's request.
Yeah, well, the Fourth of July and then the Art on the Bay, which is during...
And he's...
Well, I don't even know if the Fourth of July, when that falls, it should...
It's on a Monday, I believe, but they have so many activities, it might be.
Well, they always do, they always do the day, so that'll be Monday, the 4th.
Right, but I'm just saying, over that whole weekend.
Over the weekend, yeah. Sometimes there are events.
The movies are really super popular. I was really kind of surprised.
But he is asking...
Maybe I should have been, but I'm...
But he's asking for July 1st anyways, so.
Right, that's a Friday.
That's the Friday prior.
Right, so if we grant that, then that's what will be there.
Well, I feel pretty comfortable that Joe would be willing to work with somebody if they really had an opportunity to bring something on an off date. Very unlikely to happen anyway, so.
Historically, I agree, historically, it hasn't happened, but I'm comfortable if he's willing to work with them, it sounds like he is, if there's an event.
And who do they, who does someone book the, like, if a resident wanted to do something there, who do they, normally, they would contact you?
To us. Like Joe did, he filled out an application.
And you have Joe's contact information?
Right.
So that would be...
And we have a calendar, and it all gets on the calendar, and we check to see what's going on.
Yeah, okay, sounds fine.
And we waived the $200 last year deposit because it was a nonprofit, so I'm assuming we would do that again.
Is that what you're asking too?
Yeah.
What should I do?
He is now.
We might as well get it off.
Unless we find out he makes money, then we want to...
Let's put that all into one, let's put that all into one motion if somebody wants to move that.
I note that we approve Thunder Bay Film Society's request for alternate days and also waive their registration fee.
And the noise variance.
And allow the noise variance.
Yes.
Okay, so Sexton?
Susan.
Okay, got it. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Next up is the Michigan Arts and Culture Northeast, or MACNE, informational report and budget request.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tim Kunlai. I know all of you, and I assume you received the package of information I forwarded. There should be two packets. I made extra copies in the event that you didn't have them. Can I just share them with you? Certainly. The first is the letter of request, and I'm also updating you on the success of last year's Lake Huron Discovery Tour. And as you know, this is part of the Michigan Arts and Culture Northeast collaborative, which you all have been tremendous supporters of. My objective today is to just give you a very brief overview as follow-up to last year's discovery tour, highlight some of the success stories, and then, of course, make a request for continued support for this upcoming fiscal year to fund, help fund the Lake Huron Discovery Tour for 2016. I think you all could feel the energy in Northeast Michigan, not just Alpena, but you could certainly feel it here. But I drove that whole strip several times and did it that weekend, starting in Standish with the kickoff of the Saginaw Cultural Center, and there definitely was an energy that weekend. Did it translate into the type of results we were hoping for? It's really hard to tell, you know, in terms of the volume of economic growth of... to tell, you know, in terms of the, the volume of economic growth that we're ultimately striving for, but I can say one thing, there was a lot of community pride from everywhere along that U S twenty-three corridor, and lots of activities that would have occurred otherwise, and lots of new activities that would not have occurred otherwise. We're doing it again, we did a pretty extensive questionnaire, a follow-up, we had our summit the following week down in Skoda area on the River Queen, and followed up with internet surveys and contacting partners and soliciting feedback on the internet through our website, and there is a resounding yes to do it again. So the literature I have here is what we've put together so far for the upcoming season, I'll give you a copy, two copies of that, I'll share that here. This is our initial promotional piece for the overall tour, of course, every little town has its own thing that's yet to come, but, you know, if you didn't get a chance to read the, the initial introductory letter, I just want to cite some of the statistics. Our go-to portal for the tour, which is the U S twenty-three heritage route, it went up by twenty thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight page views and ten thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-four sessions over the last year alone, so this was building even before the weekend, and certainly continued to accelerate after. With all of our promotional efforts, from radio to other forms of media, certainly the National Public Radio Blitz, which was statewide and intensive, Ann Arbor popped out as our greatest area of interest. Ann Arbor writes, find this part of our state fascinating, and our marketing efforts began the process, we could watch daily the spikes on the internet activity and exactly where they were coming from, and Ann Arbor is by far the area of most interest, and that's a good thing for us, because, of course, we all know the socioeconomics of the Ann Arbor area, and people choosing to visit our area like Chicagoans do to the other side of the state is a big deal. In any event, there are other statistics along those lines, the Saginaw area and so forth, what we did, we laid a foundation, we know it's working, we want to continue to build upon this. I wish we had more statistics on hotel usage and things of the sort, we tried to get that data, but it's simply not accessible, for whatever reason, our CVBs and so forth don't have accurate data, they only have rough estimates, and we got very good feedback from those who reported back. One thing is very evident, that the numbers associated with the Lighthouse Festival have been precipitously declining, in fact, there is a lot of commentary that the Lighthouse Festival may not occur again, because of the people who organized it just getting tired. I've heard that there is potentially someone else picking that piece up, but we know that those numbers have declined, and what we're hearing from the CVBs in particular is that numbers at least stabilized, and we like to credit much of our marketing efforts to help fill the void from what Lighthouse was not able to generate. We're very hopeful that Lighthouse Festival will sustain itself because it's a perfect fit, we kind of serve as an umbrella to that effort, expanding the area of interest, the purview, and, and so it's our, our hope that someone will take the leadership on that initiative and allow us to continue dovetailing these things, regardless we're moving forward. There were whole sort of, a whole slew of different examples of community enthusiasm and organizations that stepped out of their boxes and tried something new, so, in any event, how the money was spent and who helped, clearly the city of Alpena was the leader, if you guys wouldn't have taken the leap and partnered with MACNE again in a very substantial way, I don't know that we would have generated the type of financial support we got. You can see from the second handout on page six, this is part of the overview, we raised just under forty thousand dollars in total cash and in-kind contributions, and that forty thousand dollars went wisely to maximize our potential. Like I said, the, the public radio outreach was probably our most cost-efficient way of reaching the greatest number of people that kind of fit the genre of interest for this type of activity, promoting arts, culture, and recreational activities here. But your leadership, of course, brought the Saginaw Eagles Landing Casino and the Saginaw Chippewa Tribe to join us as a private corporate sponsor. We got Under the Radar to join us and in-kind, helping to expand our relationship with Under the Radar, they've, are developing a close relationship with the city of Alpena and Roger City as well, among others. Besser Foundation and Community Foundation of Northeast Michigan were on board, we had the Alpena C V B and Develop by Osko join us, and with cash contributions, several journals and publications, Women to Women Magazine and Michigan History Magazine, rather substantial contributions, and a whole slew of local nonprofits giving what they could, many times in-kind, which is just as valuable to us as anything else. Lafarge Corporation, the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs, and of course, the Alpena News was really critical, helping disseminate, at least locally, the news, the news of this event. They also fostered a, an insert in the Detroit Free Press that went out to about somewhere around fifteen thousand households, I believe it was in Oakland County, the suburbs, the suburbs of Detroit. So in any event, our outreach, the impact of this has been profound, it's in, it's infancy, I can see this sustaining itself with increased contributions to make it more impactful, but also garnering the volunteers, this is an entirely a volunteer effort. We have reached out to organizations like Longines, we've spoken to the Talis Women's Business Association already since the tour, these are solicitations to us, asking, what's this all about, can you give us more detail, where did this come from, how has it evolved? And then most recently, we were so happy to be invited to attend the Northwestern Arts and Cultural Summit held at Interlaken, basically our equivalent of MACNE over there, asked us to come and share our secrets, they're very curious about what we're doing and how we're doing it, because this is, much like in our governmental council for Alpena County, it's kind of a unique phenomenon to get an entire region trying to work to promote a region as a whole, you very rarely see this except through maybe the blind portrayals, but not in a multifaceted manner. So our request is for another five thousand dollar contribution, similar to what we did last year, five hundred of it would go towards MACNE operations, which are very minimal, and the rest would go purely towards marketing. I think you can see that your contributions went directly to the Detroit Free Press Mailer, Michigan Radio, a first run, and a second run with Michigan Radio, that's U of M, and then MACNE operations, and that had the broadest reach, so I'm very proud that you were, and my city was to boot, was able to be such a critical part of that. Mariella Jones is here, she's on the committee, as you all know, and she was one of the people who went over to Interlaken to present, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Tim, the only question I had, and I kind of posed it a little bit to Mariella before the meeting, was, do you have any, given any answer as to why the city of Alpena was the only municipality?
The only municipality. The positive side of this is you guys are leaders. And I know this is being televised, so I don't say anything about the other communities, part of this is, we're a volunteer effort, and I think a lot of it, especially last year, this was groundbreaking, we were cutting ice, we tried as best we could to get the word out to as many people and organizations, both public and private, as possible, and as you know, this type of solicitation takes time, and it takes people willing to do it, and to do it up and down the region, so I, I think the word of spreading, it also is very, it's very abstract in, in some respects, and it's hard to explain the value of thinking regionally and getting everyone to cough some money up to make something like this happen, especially with marketing, because you can throw money at black holes, but people do get it, and I think this is one of those things that with time, perhaps more municipalities who tend to be more reserved about what they're doing with public money, as we discussed last time, these are difficult choices, I'm hoping that we'll get a better response this time. As you know, I sent out solicitations to every city manager and most of the mayors, so I, doubled it up in terms of the solicitation, and we'll see, I haven't heard anything yet, but I'm, I'm in a position now to do follow-up, we have some of our marketing material. A lot of this is just getting people to, to recognize what's happening, building a brand, and getting so regionally where people can let down their guards a little bit, it was interesting to go, serve as an ambassador of some of those communities, when we approached Develop by Osko, for example, we got some feedback, and what you find is, some communities have great reservation about working with one another, even within their indigenous realms, and they're in way challenging that, that framework, but that's part of what we're trying to achieve here, is stepping above and promoting the broader culture. I think one of the best things that came out of this is the relationship to the indigenous peoples and the discussions surrounding that, wherever you are in the political spectrum, this is about mutual respect and recognition that, you know, we can rediscover these relationships, and they can be valuable, healthy endeavors, and we were so appreciative of you guys taking the leadership on that as well, and I know we were part of the rumor mills on social media, but that's a good thing, because we got more attention, right?
Sure, sure.
And, so, to go back to your question, we're, we're, we can focus this time on not building the image or the logistics of this, but more soliciting more people and pounding away at them to, to maybe get another city to join us, it would help if you could share this with your colleagues in Talis and Oskota, Roger City, and, and everyone was very supportive, but we all know it comes down to, for this type of objective, getting the word out to the external community, we need money to do it. Our biggest, I think we'll be able to raise all the money that we raised last time and do the same thing again, but the challenge is getting bigger and broader in our reach. Billboards are a big issue, and they're expensive, as you know, if we could find a funder for that, we have potential for doing something pretty major with Under the Radar, they love us, it fits their genre of media coverage, if we could find ten thousand dollars, we could do way beyond what we did last time, the outreach with them is incredible, because it's social media related, and then there was one more thing, oh, potential television commercials, but as you can imagine, in political season these days, and we will be, in the midst of political season, it's probably unrealistic for us to expect we could ever buy commercials competing with the competition of political campaigns, but nonetheless, that would be ideal. So we're trying, I, I just acknowledge that it takes a particular mindset of a particular set of leaders, and we have a relationship to, that MACNE was founded in Alpena, we've had the ultimate goal of reaching out and being inclusive, we're at that point now, and I think it's no surprise that you guys have been at the center of it from the very beginning, we just don't have to work on getting the rest to come over.
He's good.
In terms of the private sector, we have various grants that we're going after this time, too, you may know Katie Wolf of the Community Foundation, she's on the board and the committee, and she's been a tremendous asset to us in terms of her knowledge of, outside resources that could help double our money, but we do need the matching in order to pursue those statewide grant sources, and of course, we're going after the corporations and whatnot, we tried really hard with Meyer and a couple of others last time, we're, we're going to be knocking on their door again, but again, we're volunteers, and it's, it's just a matter of time and energy, so.
Great, well, thank you, Tim, appreciate the report.
The time and energy you put into that.
What's that?
So thank you for the time and energy you put into the report. You'll be adjourned to closed session?
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson? Nielsen?
You are watching All About Alpena.